We've really done a lot in a little amount of time and really changed everything we've done. So a big thank you to our staff who's out there watching tonight as well. So tonight, we will have about seven parts of our agenda and I've got a special guest with me. But before I get there, I just want to say that typically I really have a spirit of positivity and talk about positive things quite a bit. And this year has had a lot of positives, but I just, I think it's important that we all are on the same page and know that this has been a very tough time, a tough time for you. You're going to work during the day, you're hoping your child is doing the work online. It's been tough on the kids because they're not used to learn online. And then our teachers at the high school level are teaching online and in-person students. And so that has been a really, really heavy lift for them. So, you know, this, this, we're going to get through this COVID-19 pandemic. But, you know, I will say that the teamwork has been great. We're thankful the kids are back in school and at the same time, we know it's been really challenging. So I just want you to know that we understand where you're coming from and we just, I hope you understand where we're coming from too. It's, it's a heavy lift for everyone, parents, students and staff. So that being said, we wanted to get in touch with you tonight, give you an update on COVID-19 and go over a few things, state and local decision making. Why are we still have virtual Fridays? Balancing the workload, state assessments, the second semester, grading, sports and extracurriculars. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our director of the Catawba County Public Health Department, colleague and somebody who's become my friend as we talk so much and we couldn't do it without our public health department. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Jennifer McCracken and she's going to give you a COVID-19 update on our process and procedures.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Stover, and just thank you to Catawba County Schools, to the school administration, to your cabinet, to, to your teachers and just staff in those school buildings, as well as the students who really are trying to do the right thing. And we certainly are, us as public health and also our school nurses truly see this as a partnership and want to be available to help and assist in any way that we can. And so I want to start out by giving you just a brief overview of where we are in terms of COVID-19 in our county. I'll then move to talking about some trends and then I'll talk a little bit more about some terms that we're, you know, unfortunately it's becoming common day language such as isolation and quarantine and exposure and what all that means related to COVID-19. So I'll go ahead and dive in. So as of today, there have been 3,681 laboratory confirmed positive cases of COVID-19 in Catawba County. And we've had 61 deaths so far of COVID-19 in Catawba County or deaths that are attributed to COVID-19. And so although cases in North Carolina and Catawba County have been on the decline since July, they have now started to slowly tick back up and as well as hospitalizations as well. And so experts anticipate that the cooler weather kind of brings more people indoors and that could further contribute to a rising cases, especially as we move into the winter months. And so I really want to emphasize the fact that right now, the overwhelming majority of cases in schools in Catawba County have been due to outside exposure through family contacts, through gatherings of people and through community spread. We have not had any clusters identified within any of the schools in Catawba County. And just so you know, clusters are identified as or defined as five or more cases in a school that are epidemiologically linked. So it means that we can determine there has been spread between those cases due to being at school. And so we haven't seen those yet. And so that's really good news. So I just wanted to give you or just walk through some numbers that we've been working with Catawba County Schools on a daily basis with. And that's really related to isolation and quarantine. So as of last week, and since Catawba County Schools has returned in class instruction, there have been roughly 71 children and 29 staff isolated due to testing positive for COVID-19. There have been an additional 815 children and 110 staff who have been quarantined because they've been close contacts to positive cases. So just to kind of clarify for you, if somebody who has COVID-19, if they are positive for COVID-19, they are isolated. If somebody has been exposed to a positive case, then they're in quarantine. So we'll go through that a little bit in more detail in just a minute. So because of this, we really encourage everybody to really double down in their efforts to practicing the three W's. Wearing face coverings, washing hands and waiting six feet apart. That's really, really important, especially when you're at gatherings, especially when you're in the community. And it's not doing so is a major contributor to, to, to the current cases that we have in Catawba County. But I did want to talk a little bit about some trends that we're seeing across North Carolina, especially related to school reopenings. So in the weeks that schools have reopened, so thinking about since mid-August to current, the percentage of children with COVID-19 in North Carolina as well as Catawba County, that number has remained steady. We've not seen an increase in the number of school-aged children who have been diagnosed with COVID-19. And that's especially true for that pre-K population and that younger elementary school population. But we've not seen a rise in, in numbers and in positive cases for that K-12 population. So that's good news. So we did have some questions, multiple questions about, about where parents can find more information and data related to COVID-19 as it relates locally as well as statewide. So certainly the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, they, they maintain a COVID-19 dashboard. On that dashboard, you can find a whole host of, of data and resources about North Carolina. And then you can also drill down to a county level as well. And you can also find information about clusters that are occurring across North Carolina. So clusters in, in K through 12 schools. And you can find information about clusters in pre-Ks and childcare centers as well. That's also on the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website. You can visit our Catawba County website and find a COVID dashboard that we keep updated on a daily basis. You can find the number of cases, you can find the number of new cases for the day. You can find the number of hospitalizations, the number of deaths, the number of tests that we've conducted, et cetera. And it's a whole host of information as well as linked to several other helpful resources. So I encourage you to visit those websites to kind of poke around. If you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to public health and we'll be more than happy to help you navigate through those. But certainly I just want to also bring attention to the fact, just once again, that overwhelmingly, the majority of cases that we're seeing at, at school have been due to outside exposure through family contacts, gatherings of people and community spread. So I think that's a really important point that I want y'all to, to understand. And the good news is that we do have a number of tools in our, in our toolbox that will help us fight COVID-19 and prevent further spread. So I'm going to talk about a few of those. So first, just so you know, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, along with the Centers for Disease Control, along with the American Academy of Pediatrics, all recommend that students return to school in person, especially those who are in the lower elementary school ages. And the governor, in conjunction with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, paved a way to make that happen. So one additional resource that I think you would find very helpful, if you haven't seen it already, is the Strong Schools North Carolina Toolkit. And that focuses on the safety measures for students, for teachers and staff as we come back into the school setting and really emphasizes social distancing, wearing masks, frequent hand washing, all these prevention measures. And certainly provides a whole host of other information, but it's a great document that I know our schools use every day, our school nurses use every day, and it's packed with a lot of information that's updated on a regular basis. And the toolkit also really serves as a guide as we talk about screening. I know that, you know, when your child first reports to school, that they are screened, you know, their temperature's checked, they're asked a whole host of questions related to symptoms and exposure. And that is, that is required by that Strong School Guidance put out by the state. And so certainly that screening is a great kind of first step to ensure that children who may be infected with COVID-19 do not enter the school and potentially infect their peers or teachers. And so it's a tool our nurses use, school staff use, and certainly an important document. But I would be remiss if I didn't make mention of our school nurse team. And they have truly been heroes throughout this whole COVID-19 pandemic. You know, we have always had a robust school nurse team. They certainly are public health experts. They're school nurses who are employed by Catawba County Public Health. They have special training in pediatrics and adolescent healthcare. And certainly as soon as this pandemic started way back earlier in 2020, they worked, worked really just on the front lines in that COVID-19 response from the very beginning. And so they truly are experts. They're not only experts in healthcare and pediatrics and adolescent care, but now you have on-the-ground experts in COVID-19 each and every day in those school buildings. And they, they are such a wealth of knowledge and information and just great, you know, just a great public health connection out into the school. And so we're very blessed as a community to have them. They're just a really strong team. So certainly that is an invaluable tool that we all have that can help us as we navigate through this pandemic response. But we have been getting a lot of questions about symptoms and exposure and isolation and quarantine. So just bear with me, I'm going to walk through what seems to be probably a little bit tedious information, but it's really important as we, as we navigate through this pandemic. So in thinking about symptomatic children and staff, school nurses are working with parents, children and school staff very quickly to identify students and staff who are exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19. Students who do show symptoms at school are immediately quarantined. We're calling that parent or guardian, we're notifying them, we're talking to them, educating them. And we're recommending that that child sees a medical provider for further evaluation. And we certainly recommend that any child who has symptoms be tested. If the child is diagnosed by a medical provider with a different illness, because, you know, strep throat, ear infections, none of that stuff goes away. So if they would be, if they would be diagnosed with a different illness that explains those symptoms, then the child can return to school following those normal school guidelines. And so one thing I wanted to make note of is if you don't have a healthcare provider for your child and or have some type of trouble accessing healthcare, please reach out to your school nurse because they will be more than happy to help you find a provider who, who will meet the needs of you and your child. So please give them a call. But moving forward, I wanted to talk a little bit about exposures. And so before I do that, I want to talk about kind of the definition of what exposure could be. So the CDC defines a close contact is anyone who is within six feet of an infected person for a cumulative total of 15 minutes, starting from 48 hours before the person began feeling sick until the time the patient was isolated. And so children and staff who we determine who've been exposed to a positive case need to quarantine at home for 14 days after their last date of exposure. Because an incubation period, so a period of time that it takes the virus to grow is 14 days. So it could take somebody 14 days to develop symptoms. So that's why we have the 14-day period for a quarantine. And so it's really important that the full 14 days pass before the exposed child or staff member returns to school. And so the school nurse will be working with you to, to help you determine what that 14-day timeframe is. So depending on the classroom, depending on the exposure, only a few children might need to be quarantined or an entire class may have to be quarantined. It really just depends. And so our school nurses are working very closely with teachers, with administrators to make sure that we understand how children move about in a classroom, who sits near each other, where those children may go throughout the day. And we're really trying to really hone in on and determine who would need to be quarantined. There's a lot of work that goes into that. We don't take that lightly. And so children or staff who are suspected of having COVID-19 are immediately quarantined to prevent, to prevent potential spread. And then of course, we're referring those people to a medical provider. And then also for children who we know have been exposed and are quarantined, we recommend that they get tested, especially if they have family members who are also in school or who are in childcare, because we want to make sure that we lessen the spread of, of disease in those settings. So when we do find a case of COVID-19 in, in the school setting, so whether it's a staff member or whether it's a student, they are not allowed to come back to school, excuse me, until at least 10 days have passed. And that is because the Center for Disease Control say, says that people with mild to moderate cases of COVID-19 remain infectious no longer than 10 days. So after that 10-day period, those folks are considered no longer contagious. And so again, the school nurses working with that, that child and that family to determine what that 10-day timeframe is. And so overall, we've noticed that there have been multiple instances where children with COVID-19 are in the same household. We see household contact and household transmission all the time. And so we know that this can impact multiple grades. And we know that it can sometimes have linkages to other schools. And it also can have linkages to area childcare centers as well. And so again, like I said before, there have been no clusters identified in any school in Catawba County. However, there is a, there's always a potential for that. And so we respond to these, or we'll respond to this on a case-by-case situation in partnership with our state officials, in partnership with school district leadership. And so we'll make the determination on how that's handled. We certainly will work very closely to determine who would need to be quarantined. But just keep in mind, it could be a few students, it could be a classroom, it could be a grade level, or it could be an entire school. We hope it's not that, but certainly, you know, we, we don't take those kinds of situations lightly and we do work in partnership with not only the school district, but also, also our state officials as well. But lastly, I want to leave you with a prevention message. You know, certainly we've talked about how COVID-19 is spread. And I think most importantly though, we need to talk about how it's presented. No matter where the setting, we know that those three W's, that everybody can take will slow the spread of COVID-19. So that's wearing a cloth face covering over your nose and mouth, especially when you can't practice social distancing. It's waiting six feet apart and avoiding close contact as much as possible. And washing your hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds and using hand sanitizer. And we know that both of those are widely available in the schools. And so children have lots of opportunity to do that. And so while none of these measures used alone are 100% effective, they're most effective when, when they're combined and used together. So with that, I just want to thank you. I want to thank you for all you're doing. I know it's stressful. I'm a parent, so I understand. And I know that it takes all of us working together to, to slow the spread of COVID-19. And I just appreciate you taking the time this evening and to engage with us about what you can do and how we can better serve you. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. McCracken. We're certainly very thankful for you and your staff. Our school nurses have been huge assets and quite honestly, we couldn't do it without you guys. So thank you so much. All right. So I'll tell you, the first learning we've had this school year is probably that quarantine process. And the fact that, you know, sometimes we have to quarantine many folks. And so you've heard that, you know, we've, we've had well over 900 quarantines. And I'll tell you, the, the, the fact is, we're thankful that, you know, people have remained healthy. But trying to find, you know, class coverage or if it's the teacher that has to go home, then they are then teaching virtually back into the class. And we, we find somebody to cover the class for supervision. And then of course, parents have to find childcare, maybe not so much at high school, but elementary and middle a lot of times. So we know that those are difficult for everybody, but it's definitely out of an abundance of caution. And we certainly want to do our best to stop the spread of COVID-19 so we can get more of our students back in the school building. And speaking of getting back in the school building, let's talk a little bit about the difference between state and local decisions. And this is the question that keeps popping up. And that is, is when, when can we get all the kids back to school? Well, that is a state decision. Currently, we're allowed to go in A for K-5 and which is full return. But in 612, the governor has not allowed us to come back. We're in, we're still in B, which is 50%. So that is a state decision. And, and so we are set some priorities for our lower grades. And one of those was social distancing. And I just, I just want to make note of this is if and when we can ever get our students back in, then we have to be, I think we need to be aware that in the upper grades especially, social distancing will be really, really difficult. Because the students are larger, the rooms are not bigger. And so it's just something to keep in mind as we move forward for our students coming back and how important those face coverings will be. So just, just a little difference there on the state and local and why. The other thing is, I want to tell you that, and it might not apply to you, but maybe a friend down the street, but we will continue to offer 100% virtual learning. And that's one of the things in Catawba County where we are thankful for. We, we do have, we've had an online high school program this year. The high school online program, we're, we're running it a lot different than what we've had in the past because of the volume. And in the beginning, we really thought that we would have our online teachers, we'd have our face-to-face teachers. By the time we got survey results and we, we, we sat down to look at personnel and ironed that all out, we simply just weren't able to make it happen. And so I know that has been something that has been on everyone's mind. And our high school teachers have done a great job adjusting, but it's been a lot for them and your students to try to do online and/or face-to-face. So, excuse me, that was definitely a new learning for us. So why are, why are Fridays still virtual? And I just kind of alluded to that. First, I want to say that those Fridays are still learning days for our students. They should have four to six hours of work and that they should be, you know, turning that into the teachers. Our teachers have office hours those days, they're planning, they're working with their students online, who are 100% online. They're also doing Google Hangouts individually with other students with tutoring. They're also making parent contacts. And so they are still learning how to use our learning management systems, either Google Classroom or Canvas. And so we're still becoming better and better at that each day. So they also have staff development opportunities for those things on Fridays as well. And so that's why we need those Fridays. And quite honestly, I wouldn't, our staff would be really, really behind, no, no life at all, no family if we didn't have those Fridays. So we really appreciate your patience and flexibility on those Fridays. And so when we think about those Fridays and we, we think about your students not being there three days a week, this is probably the largest barrier we've had. And that is, is students who aren't with us on those face-to-face days are still responsible. Typically, they have four to six hours of work, like I said. A little rabbit trail here is, is that our, our teachers plan for about an hour per class. And there's a study in North Carolina through the Friday Institute that if a teacher plans about an hour lesson with, with, you know, video work and follow-up questions, typically that will take a student anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half, depending on the student's ability. And so, so you may see a four-hour, you may see six-hour. If you start seeing more than that, please contact your teacher. That was, that was a question too, what do we do if we have, our student has just too much work? Please contact your teacher. In the rare case you couldn't get in contact with them, then just, just contact the principal of that school. But so four to six hours on those non-learning days. And so, so if a student says, and I've been a high school principal, they come home and say, "Mom, Dad, Grandma, Grandpa, I don't have any work on those days." That, that is not true. They do have work on those days. And they, they need to get off the Xbox and into, into the classroom. And I've, I've got my own kids that we talked to about that as well. So that being said, I wanted to talk to you about that workload balance and those Fridays. Another thing that keeps coming up is what about state assessments? Excuse me. State assessments are still on, although I'm not a big fan of that at this current time. I'm definitely advocating against that. I think this is a poor time to do standardized testing at the end of the semester when different students have different opportunities and limitations right now. And not to mention, not only seeing our students two days a week makes it very difficult to get through the entire standard course of study. And parents, this is something I've told the teachers as well, is that when we have our students two days face-to-face and three days virtually, sometimes we can get through the, the content, but sometimes we can't. So we are pushing not to get through the whole curriculum, but to hit the high points of those pieces of the curriculum that will prepare the student for the next step. And if not, I think we, we would water it down, kids would be all over, people would be lost, I think a lot of frustration. And so we've really tried to empower our teachers to, to understand that it's okay if we don't get through that whole thing. Pick out those standards that are most important. Let's hit them, let's make sure our students know them and understand them. And then next year, they'll be prepared or next semester for the next course. So that's a little something about the state assessments. And I alluded this to a little earlier too. And if you are having any issues at all, please contact our teachers. They, we've, we've set three priorities in Catawba County this year. Our first priority is safety and sanitation and social distancing. Our second, our second priority is communication. And our third priority is the school culture so that staff and students feel comfortable and safe in the environment when they come to work and/or learn. That second one being communication, we know how important that piece is and we've really talked a lot about that. So if you need to talk to the teacher, don't hesitate to reach out to them. I will say that we do have a 24-hour ask of them to be back in touch. Please note that our teachers are just like you and me. They get home and have to help their children when they get home. So if it's after five, I don't mandate that they answer emails, although I know we have a lot of teachers who do. They can't help it. But if, if by chance you do have, you know, a lack of correspondence after five, please note that, you know, I've, I've empowered them to, to take a break, to be with their family because I think that's just as important to be ready for work the next day. And so those questions can be answered the next day and I apologize for that. We know that's frustrating and that's one of those things that I've talked about is this thing is not easy. So we appreciate your flexibility on that and understanding. So when we're thinking about next semester, high school parents, if you're not aware, I hope you, you will be aware unless you're not interested, our high school principals sent an email to each of our students on October 7th. It's called a request to change form. And so if you were interested in going all virtual second semester, then that form is due October 21st by 5:00. You say, "Well, Matt, well, I don't, my student doesn't want to change. They want to stay face-to-face." Don't fill it out, don't turn it in. Say, "Matt, these, these students need to go all virtual." Then you turn that request of change form in and turn that in by October 21st by 5:00. So next semester is we're working towards a, a, a better balance for our teachers and students where they have some online and some person-to-person, not this hybrid mix. And so, and so our high schools have started working on that. We think that that will only help our teachers and help our students. So again, that's again, why we wanted to see that request to change form. So high school grading becomes big. And so another thing that has popped up is, what about our grades? What about zeros? How do we do this? What, what if we have makeup work? So I'm not going to get into the weeds on that simply because the grading is so close to each teacher and each principal. So I would ask that you communicate any, any grading issues with the teacher and principal of your school so we can help out your child and get things caught up. I know in Canvas, sometimes we just forget to hit the submit button or sometimes we just miss an assignment as we go through the learning management system and the, what the teachers asked for. And so we understand that, we're going to give you guys grace. And please understand that not only we can give you grace, we just ask for grace in return because we'll make mistakes as well. So we certainly will get those fixed if we've made any mistakes. So just talk to your teachers about grading. The last thing on my list is sports. Currently, the High School Athletic Association Currently, the High School Athletic Association is saying that sports can start November 4th. I believe the first three sports are swimming, cross-country, and volleyball. We are working with our schools too, to do our extra, start working on some extracurriculars outside where we can. And so I think the biggest thing that your takeaway for sports and athletics tonight, whether you're a parent or teacher, or just maybe a community member maybe listening, currently, the Athletic Association will not allow any more than 25 spectators inside and 50 outside, or seven per 1,000 square feet. Now, I think that could change, but I will tell you, if the data continues to go up, I don't believe that will change. I do hope that at some point, that will change to allow at least parents in and possibly a few fans, but for right now, that is what the Athletic Association is going by, which is the governor's orders, obviously. The 25 and 50, we've seen that in Phase 3. So I would encourage you folks, again, like Ms. McCracken had said, those three Ws are so important. And I'll tell you, I just want to say again, your child, well, soon-to-be woman or man, is doing an awesome job at high school doing that. I didn't even know what to expect on that, but you folks have done a wonderful job getting them ready and letting them know how important that is, and we appreciate that greatly. So anytime you're on our campuses, we ask that you follow the same procedures: wear that mask, stay six feet apart, make sure you wash your hands, and we ask the same of our students and staff. So I'll leave you with this. It has been a good six months, it's been a tough six months, but I've always been told that when things are a little bit challenging, you always come out a better person on the other side. And I believe that not only for our students and staff, but also myself. So folks, it might be a little frustrating, might be really difficult right now, but we're going to work together on this, we're going to get through it. Certainly not without struggles, but I will say this, it is an absolute pleasure having 50% of our kids in the building, and I mean that with all my heart, and I know our staff is thankful to have them there too. That being said, we are thankful for your partnership in your child's education. They've got four years left, three years, two years, maybe this is their last year, they're seniors, and let's make this the last best four years of their life, three, two-year, one. That being said, I'm Matt Stover, and I'm tuning out tonight. Thanks for joining us. Have a good one.